I would like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for November 6, 2023. Thank you all for joining us. We will, we really have just one item on our, on our calendar tonight is an update, update from the Jefferson County School District on their school closure program. And we will start our meeting as we generally do with, with a public comment on any item that is on the agenda. So if it's on the agenda, so speaking about the school, the school closure projects, that will, is what we're going to do. And our first speaker looks to be Kathleen Martell. If you would please come to the podium. If you would please introduce yourself, first name, last name, and give us an address. And please spell your last name for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Starker. My name's Kathleen Martell, M-A-R-T-E-L-L. I'm at 6455 West 31st Avenue in Wheat Ridge, District 1. And I'm just here tonight really more to learn than to contribute. But I am the Chair of the Cultural Commission here in Wheat Ridge and also very active in the Regenerate Wheat Ridge Program. And out in the community, I've heard a lot of feedback and have had, you know, questions come to me that I tend to send to all of you about what's happening with the schools and opportunities for the community in the schools that have been closed. And particularly, I've had a lot of people express interest in the potential for a agriculture or food hub type setup at the old Wilmore Davis School as it's sitting right next to Happiness Gardens. And we're doing a lot of work there around food production and community sustainability practices. The Regenerate Wheat Ridge Program has been really successful in teaching people about growing their own food. And so that proximity lends itself to a really good opportunity to expand that program if possible. I've also heard a lot of feedback from the community around the Cultural Commission looking for art space. And I know the city recently did a study, but there's always more opportunity. And we have a lot of really great groups in Wheat Ridge that are doing art and culture programs. And Cola Strand with its location and its space might lend itself to gallery space and art studio space and opportunities for more local residents to do art. So those are kind of my two wheelhouses here in Wheat Ridge, art and agriculture. And so with the opportunities in front of us around these schools and these buildings, I'm here to learn how we can give input and also to see if there's ways I can get involved as a community member. So thank you for having the study session and letting me be here.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't have anyone else that's signed up to speak tonight, but if you are here and haven't signed up, we'd be happy to hear from you. Just please come to the podium. If you're joining us on the, on the internet, online, if you would, would, and would like to speak, if you would please raise your hand, we'll be happy to bring you into the meeting. And I should have said earlier, we have a three-minute limit on our speaking, but we're happy to have you come in. And we don't have anybody coming forward, and there's no one coming forward. So we'll bypass our public's right to speak and go right to Agenda Item Number 1. This is going to be an update from the Jefferson County School District on their school closure program. I'm really pleased to have Jeff Gatlin, the Chief Operating Officer, here with us today to provide this presentation. Jeff, thank you much for being here. Would you like to join us at the table? And we also have with us Roger Sherman. Roger, if you'd like to join us with, I was going to say RNL, but I think CRL is a better, a better acronym. So thank you very much for joining us. And Jeff?
Turn the light on. Sorry.
Oh, yes. Okay. Jeff, the floor is yours.
All right. Well, good evening and thank you, everyone, for having us here tonight to provide an update to you. Quick introduction. I'm Jeff Gatlin. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Jeffco Schools. I have been in this role since the end of May, so I'm relatively new. But with each passing day, I don't get to say that quite, quite as strongly. And I'm here with, with Roger Sherman from CRL, who is one of our partners in this process. And so we wanted to provide an update to you all tonight with where we are in the disposition process. And then there were a couple other items that there might be particular interest that I was hoping to, to cover or at least touch on as well. So first, just a reminder of why we're here. Since 2000, Jefferson County has grown by 55,854 residents, but school-aged children have declined by over 29,000. We've lost more than 5,000 students between 2019 and 2022. And this should be a bit of, bit of background information that I imagine you are already aware of. Financial and operational challenges needed to be addressed. We have capacity to serve 96,000 students in traditional classroom or district-managed schools, and we currently serve 69,000. So the call to action with these issues was our regional opportunities for thriving schools. And our regional opportunities for thriving schools was an initiative that was devised in the spring of 2022 to respond to the board's request for a comprehensive plan to ensure thriving schools with enrollment to support extraordinary student experiences across our district. Phases 1 and 2 of our regional opportunities for thriving schools resulted in the board decision to close 19 schools. So our disposition process, now that we have properties that are no longer serving a school function, is what do we do with them and what, what process do we use to work them through the disposition process? So we have a core team of district staff, really surrounded by an advisory committee that is representative of other committees of the school district. Our financial oversight committee and our capital asset advisory committee as well has representation on the property disposition committee. And then we also engaged in experts. This, this isn't our, our core competency. We aren't real estate developers. We aren't brokers. So we have JLL, who I'll introduce kind of who they are and what they do in a moment, who is a real estate broker. And we have CRL, who really works on public engagement, communication, and support in that area. So JLL is a professional service and investment management firm that's offering real estate services to us. And like I mentioned, CRL and Roger are leading the way on public relations, public affairs, strategic communications, and other topics like that. So Roger, I'm going to turn it over to you real quick to talk a little bit about the community engagement or the advisory committee and the community engagement priorities.
And if you would just kind of bring the mic up kind of close so that we get everybody online to be able to hear you.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Turn your light on. There we go. Thank you. So as Jeff mentioned, we've been retained to help with outreach and government relations for this process. You know, I think our first priority is, is working with and collaborating with the municipal partners because a lot of what, the decisions that will come forward will ultimately end up in your kind of court around land use, zoning, and those kinds of issues. And so we've tried to work real hard at talking about what the district can do and what the district is not involved in. We want to be as transparent in our communication with adjacent communities. You know, what we've done so far is really focused on the two schools that the board already formally voted on to surplus. They've identified the schools that will close, but then they have to take a second vote to actually formally surplus them. And then the process begins, and we'll go kind of through that process. And so the, one of the first things we did around those two schools were to host community meetings. We sent mailers and flyers about a half a mile around each school to publicize those meetings. Both meetings had 50 to 70 people, so we had a pretty good turnout. We also have a rather robust website, and it's a great place for your community members to sign up. If they want, they can go ahead and sign up. And we're, we're building a list around all the schools, even though we're not doing anything actively around the schools that have not been formally surplus yet. But we can already start to gather the names and contact information for people that are interested. And then we'll continue to, then, then the other thing is, is we've, we have appointed what we're calling ad hoc members. And so there's the core advisory committee that Jeff talked about. And then for each school property, we've appointed four ad hoc committee members. We've actually appointed three. Those are based on applications that came in from residents and community members. And then each jurisdiction, so Westminster appointed one for this, for their school, Arvada appointed one to represent the city for that school. So those are the four. Three community members and one municipal representative are ad hoc committees. They'll be involved in the process just around each of those particular schools and join the, and assist the, the kind of the standing advisory committee members.
So if, if you could go back to slide six real quick, kind of glossed over this. So this is our, this is our disposition process and kind of the steps along the way. And I'll, I'll, I'll get into a little bit more, really, it's a, it's a two-pronged approach around a pre-qualification part of the process and then a call for offers part of the process. But you can see there's multiple steps along the way, and there's multiple steps where we're getting engagement from our committees and our ad hoc committee for reviewing and feedback and input along potential proposals. And so now if you jump to slide 10, sorry for skipping around right there.
10.
Yep. This is that same process kind of mapped out as it relates to a timeline. And one of the things that, that might jump out of the page is this, this timeline going from start to finish is scheduled to take 179 days. So it's scheduled to take a while, and that's assuming that all the pieces throughout the process line up and there aren't any hiccups along the way. So we are, and we, we kind of highlighted in red just a couple of the, the steps where the committees are engaged in the process for review and feedback. And so we are in the, we're about to enter into that first red box of the first phase of our first two schools. And I know from our board and maybe our communities, there's a sentiment of, okay, can we speed this up? Can we get going on additional properties? And we're trying to strike a good balance right now of, we, we, we do want to move other properties through the process, but we're also learning through this process as we go. And one thing to mention is we identified the, the flow chart of our property, property disposition process where we're seeking pre-qualification proposals and ultimately submittals. But we're exploring a process for municipal partnership as well. And if a municipality or a city comes to us and says, hey, we're really interested in this for X reason, it doesn't really fit into the process that we first outlined very well. And so we're working on drafting a process, and we're going to be working with the city managers to get feedback and input on that. We have a draft that we, that we're ready to, to show them that hopefully we can say, if we have a property that's of particular interest, okay, here's the process to follow for that. If it's not particular interest to the municipality or a city, then they're following the standard process with the process that you just saw. Let's go. Back one. Sorry. This is fine. I appreciate the, the quick, quick response. This is a, a quick snapshot of 19 sites that we have that, that, that have the potential to run through our disposition process. We will be adding two more to this, more middle school and Arvada K8, who our board decided just last month to close, but they have a school functioning in those facilities for the rest of the school year. So those will be added to the list and then be considered for future disposition. And certainly the two, two properties highlighted in red are of particular interest to the Wheat Ridge community, Cola Strand and Wilmore Davis. Okay, let's go to 12. Or 11, I'm sorry. My, my slide's printed kind of, I apologize. Go to 11. So our, our, our evaluation process, like I mentioned, is kind of a two-pronged approach where we're soliciting pre-qualification documents, and those will go through a filtered process with our ad hoc committees, our internal team, and ultimately, depending on the number of pre-qualification responses that we get, a certain number will move on for a submittal, where we'll be requesting proposals from them, and that'll kind of follow a similar process. So really a two-pronged approach. And I think it's really important to understand, on the next slide, is what is our selection criteria? How are we making decisions based on the proposals that come in? And the, the selection criteria that we've identified really are around being a collaborative partner, certainly financial capacity and benefit, enhancing neighborhood quality, neighborhood compatibility and design, and strategic planning. So when we're looking at proposals through the pre-qualification process, and then we're ultimately weighing proposals, that's the selection criteria that'll drive priority and possible selection of a proposal. We're onto the, so next steps. We're completing the process for our two currently surplus properties, like Roger mentioned, Allendale and Zurgur. We're not going to wait to go through that entire process with those two properties before we try to launch the next round of surplus properties and recommend surplus properties to our board. We're still trying to, to find that right balance of when that's going to be, but we know, certainly know it's not going to be to the end, and we'll be working on that. We're evaluating, updating our process to date. Like I mentioned, we've already learned for the need and the desire to possibly create that municipality pathway in this, continue to work with, with Patrick and other city managers in this process. And then, like I mentioned, then additional surplus properties will ultimately, recommendations will be made to our board, and then hopefully approval from our board, and that'll kick off the process from there. So that's high level where we are in disposition. And want to do questions for that. I have a few other topics I can go through, whatever your preference is, if you want to pause and, and go through questions.
Let's see if we have some questions now. It looks like Councilor Hoppe has a question. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for coming to get and sharing this information with us. What I'm hearing is it, this process being a, a new process, we're kind of walking and chewing gum at the same time, learning on our way around. But the timeline for those two schools, 179 days, what do you think your capacity will be to be able to bring more schools on board? And do you think that that timeline will be, will be able to shorten? Or do you think it really will start to finish on each school, be 179 days with overlapping schools in different process?
I think that's a, that's a good question around capacity. I think, I think a lot of it will depend on what the next round of recommended properties looks like. Is it, is it two schools, school sites? Is it more than that? And I think what that'll really do is increase some of the timelines in that timeline from a review, from, you know, filtering and screening. And so I, I, I feel like we have capacity in the process right now to support that. And, and there is a degree of, of learning and flying a little bit as we go. We feel really good about our process because we are relying on some external experts too who've done this, and this is what they do. And so, you know, that'll be the types of questions that we ask with the next wave or round of properties that we push through this. Like, can we, does our, do our current structures and systems support, whatever that looks like, and rely a bit on, on their expertise to answer that.
Great. Thank you. And then one last question. You had mentioned there's a website where you can sign up for notifications. Is that just the Jefferson County School District website, or is there a specific, a different one?
You just Google Jefferson property disposition. It'll pull up right to that page. Or if you're on the district's website, you can just put in property disposition.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. First, are there any obstacles to designating these properties as a surplus? Say, if they received any bond funding in any of these buildings?
Yeah. So part of, part of when we're looking at recommendations to surplus is understanding what the investments were from previous bond programs. And there's some, some formulas and some thresholds that we have to, to make sure that we're really understanding. And, and really getting our minds wrapped around that too was really important and part of why we're starting off slow. So we are looking at that and really, we're still working on a breakdown, because you can imagine, looking at any bond issuance on any of these properties for improvements over the past 20 years on a site-by-site level over, you know, multiple issuances possibly of, of bonds. We are analyzing that, and we are making sure that we're, that we're not at risk or we have a plan to, to, to mediate any issues with that.
And then my other question is, the, the building that was reverted to Westminster, can you explain what that process was? Did they have to purchase the property or, or?
Yeah. My understanding of that is there was a legacy agreement for that site that if it, if it was, if it wasn't going to be used for a school function, it would automatically revert back to Westminster. And so when that school was closed and it was no longer being, you know, serving a school function, that, that just, that went into effect. So it was based on a, a kind of a legacy agreement. I'm not sure the date of, of when it happened.
So like maybe a deed restriction or something kind of separate?
I'm not sure the instrument that, that it was done. It might have been in the deed. I, I don't know, to be honest. I could find that out, though.
Well, I was.
To see what the exact, exact mechanism was to do that.
Okay. Because I mean, we've just had some issues with, with wanting to update the green. And just given the history of, of Jefferson County, like that would be something that I would be interested in moving forward is, is kind of like an agreement of that nature.
Sure.
If, if, in the future, a building were to be closed again, then it reverts to, to Wheat Ridge, given the, you know, the significant investment that we've made in the property.
Yep.
Thank you. Mayor Protim States.
Thank you. And thank you for being here. I think that we all appreciate Jeffco coming in and letting us know what's going on. I think that was part of the, the obstacle. I think last year is, is nobody really knew what was going on until it was going on. So I think that getting ahead of this and being proactive and reaching out to the cities and, and the community and trying to kind of figure out what's, what should be what before, you know, just deciding is, is probably a good idea. As you, and, and kind of along Counselor Dozeman's question, have you figured out, not just bonds, but like with Cola Strand, the playground was paid for partially by the city and some GOCO grants, things like that? So there's like, I think, an 18 years left or something on the agreement there. So have you figured ways around that yet? Or is that just you're kind of looking at each school individually, or how's that?
I think we're going to have to look at some of the schools individually. And then when we, when we encounter, you know, maybe a complication or, or something that's, that hasn't been typical up to that point that we have to work through, we'll have to, we'll have to figure out what the solution is. I don't, you know, I'm not sure. I don't, not sure. We haven't experienced that yet. Granted, we're, we're early in this process that I'm aware of. And I think that would be something, if, if there was some kind of an encoverance or some kind of right, you know, to, to part of a parcel based on, you know, certain funding, we would have to work with the city on, on what that looks like, what makes the most sense, and just how to navigate that together. But that would be something where I would hope, you know, we're engaged closely with Patrick and his team and really looking at that together to understand what the, what the challenge is and what the possible solutions are to that.
Well, I mean, and I like the idea of giving a city another process that's kind of separate from a, a public process or a private partnership, so that the cities can take some of that property and use it for, for city functions. Because I think that Cola Strand specifically might be really good for that, for, for what Ms. Martell talked about earlier, for an art space or something like that. And I know that we like to use the, the soccer fields and things like that. So the more we can work together with that, I think that would be great. So if you guys are looking at putting community members or, or city officials on that, I think that's definitely something that we, as a city council, would like to find somebody and, and put them in that role. Do you know how many schools, and I know this is again, again, getting a little ahead of this process, how many of the schools that Jeffco might want to keep back just in case the population goes back up or?
Yeah. Good, good question. And, you know, we don't have a firm number of, we want to keep these for whatever function it may be. One of the things that we have added and that we've learned in this process is we're going to be getting recommendations from JLL on potential properties, recommendation of property or properties, multiple properties to, to go through the next round of, of disposition. And we've created a, a, a pretty robust internal committee to review recommendations and really make sure that, you know, a lot of multiple angles are, are really looking at, are these the right properties? Is there some potential for other use? What is the, you know, what is, what might the future look like there as far as immediate need? And either push back on the recommendation or provide feedback that might influence it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We're pleased to let you all know that Counselor Nosler Beck is joining us online. We welcome her, that once again, we have a full council meeting for us tonight in the study session. And I would like to recognize her at this time.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks so much for the presentation, too. I wish I could be there with you all tonight, but I'm keeping myself away from germs. So thanks. I wanted to just talk a little bit more about the community engagement process that you all have, have already, it sounds like, been through with two other properties. The, the community in Wheat Ridge, you know, has really kind of gone through it with Jeffco Schools on the community engagement process. And I'm just wondering, for people who attend the, sorry, my kid's bugging me right this minute. Go away. And I love you, but go away. But I, I'm just wondering if you could explain, I think that there was real, there was some distrust that came from the community engagement process with the school closures, where we felt like as a community, we weren't necessarily, we were kind of too late in the game. And so I'm just wondering, with what we hear back from the community and that community engagement process, how much of that feedback is actually going into this planning process?
Well, I think council member, I think there's two things. One is there, there will likely be a new list identified at some point in the future of additional schools, right? And so we haven't even really started to talk about how that might, how we might change that process, because I know that was quite upsetting to the community in some cases. Jeff, neither Jeff or I were on board yet when the, the vote to surplus this first list. So we've, one of the things that we learned is like, the, the mayor Protim's question is, when we get an idea of what the next group of schools will be, you know, we're going to notify, talk to those jurisdictions in advance before that, that actual vote happens, so that, you know, we're ahead of the game. We, there's no one, no one's caught off guard, no one's surprised that those, those decisions have been made. And, you know, I think we'll be, a, a part of that conversation is, okay, how, how is it best to communicate with your community? Every community has a little bit of a different network and, and way of gaining information, providing information to your residents. So we want to make sure that, you know, we're tapping in correctly. We, we designed something for these first schools that, that we think worked okay. But, you know, there's, there's always more ways to communicate. So I think it's two different things. I mean, the, the initial announcement that a school's going to be potentially on the list to close, you know, that's, that's, you know, a shock to communities, and, and we recognize that. And then, once that decision is made, how do we, how do we make sure we're engaging people to comment and, and contribute to their, you know, their ideas for what that property might become in the future?
Yeah. Thanks, thanks so much for recognizing that, Roger. I, I guess my, my point is that there's a real opportunity here for a lot of, I think, trust to be gained in making sure that in this round of community engagement, if these schools end up being on the surplus list, and all of the ifs that are out there with this. end up being on the surplus list and all of the ifs that are out there with this, like that, that the community's feeling like their input and their time is being, you know, valued in all of this. And so, I'm so, I'm so glad that you all are here presenting to us this evening on this. But we are, but just, just to warn both of you a little bit, and I'm sure you're totally up to speed on this, but Wheat Ridge was, was really unhappy with how things were handled with the closures before. And so, this is a real opportunity and, and I just appreciate the transparency and the openness tonight on that. The other question I just had, and I think this is kind of piggybacking on what Mayor Protem Stites was talking about, but what is the process to being added to the ad hoc committees? Like what, how does, how did, how did that work with the other schools?
So there's, excuse me, on the website, there's a place where anyone that's interested in serving on the, as an ad hoc committee member, just fills out kind of an application. There's five, five questions to answer and indicate that they're interested in. So, once we're officially surplus, your schools are on the list, we'll open the portal for those applications. We'll be doing, kind of have a newsletter that goes out based on, on the school locations. Anyone that signs up for a particular school will get information on an ongoing basis about what's happening with that property. And so we would announce the application process is being opened through that newsletter through your, you know, each of you have, I know, communication platforms that you use with your constituents and we take those. So then, then the committee members review that, the permanent committee members review that and make a selection of three people. Simultaneously with that, I would reach out to the mayor, like I did with Mayor McNally and Mayor Williams, and we just ask for an appointment that's made by the city for someone that they want to represent your interests.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you both for being here tonight. We appreciate getting, getting read in with all of the slides, the graphics and the timelines because it's really important. I have a couple of questions. So when, when, for the pre-qualification phase of this, are those applications gonna be reviewed based off of the current zoning for the cited schools?
Yeah, for, for the, for pre-qualification, you know, we're, zoning will be, will be part of that and, but it won't necessarily be a deal breaker at the pre-qualification stage. Really, we're trying to understand at this stage of, of the process, you know, does somebody have the capacity, the wherewithal, the experience, the expertise to deliver on a project? And so, we, at that point, we might not even get the exact, here's, here's what we're gonna do on the site. It might be more of, here's what we've done in the past, so we might be able to infer a bit on what they've done. But really then, when, when we, when we recommend and move into the call for offers or the proposal phase, that's when zoning, whether it be, you know, adhering to current zoning or, or, you know, possibly working with the city to make a zoning change would be part of that process. And ultimately, the proposal or the proposer, our hope, is engaging with the city at that point in the process to really understand what, what their proposal might, might look like working through the city process.
Okay, thanks.
Just, we have spent a lot of time working very closely, communicating closely with the planning department for both Westminster and Arvada, to make sure we understand what the zoning is, what the comp plan says, what might be possible and so that we understand that and have been able to try to communicate that to any potential interested parties. And I think the very first qualification was, you know, have they been good, good community partners? Have they talked to the city? You know, we would expect that they would have some level of understanding. The other thing we did is with those packets, the pre-qualification packet, we provided the PowerPoint that we did for the community meeting. We did a summary of all public comments that we've received up, up to that point so that they could see what, anything that came in from the website, anything that came in at those community meetings have been shared with anyone that has indicated there's an interest in submitting a pre-qualification document. So we've tried to be very transparent with them so they get a sense of what is the, what's the lay of the land in the community.
Okay, thanks. My second question, so these, these properties are unique in that unlike a lot of times in our community when a vacant lot sells and gets developed and everyone's like, where did our open space go? It was in fact not open space. It was just a vacant lot. But community schools are actually community amenities and the neighborhoods that surround them really have integrated with, with actual space and land and the use of the school. And, and so, council member Omeni, we represent Loma Davis District. So the schoolyard is actually like really an open space in a park that is like rightly viewed by the community is, is a little bit more common in civic space. So how much is that gonna be taken into consideration? Like I recognize we're not the landowner. We're, we're working on some ideas that we hope to bring to you that I think would be of interest and exciting, but it, it just, it doesn't feel like a typical land transaction in terms of like civic amenity and common space. So I'm just curious how that conversation's threading through.
That's tough, that is tough. You know, I think the district has some financial needs that they're trying to address with these properties and they're trying to balance that with making sure they're good partners with the jurisdictions on, on a process. So I think when we talk with the managers about, what I'm thinking of as an off-ramp for the municipal interests, if, if there is a particular community group or a use that the city has a high interest in, or if the city itself has an interest in, you know, we would off-ramp that, that school and have an opportunity to, to slow the process down and, and have those conversations. So it, the current kind of process doesn't really address that specifically, but we've learned that already, you know, ahead of the game, Lakewood, the Action Center and Emory. So we've learned already that we needed that process. So if you've got, you know, some ideas and you all are thinking about, there will be an opportunity then for us to, to take that, you know, take the school, you know, take the exit and have those conversations.
And I, I think to your, to your question too, as, as it relates to maybe a proposal that's going through our, our regular process and not through municipality, I think that a lot of it'll depend on the type of interest. And our goal would be that it's checking as many of those boxes as possible. I don't think we've had a conversation to say, you know, absence of this means a deal breaker, but that'll be something that we're evaluating each proposal on. And I think a lot of it will depend on, on the interest and how many proposals that we get to.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Omen.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for coming tonight and presenting. So my question, and maybe you've talked about this, is gonna be more the transparency of, when you're having these conversations, is that gonna be like a, you've talked about there's gonna be the ad hoc committee, is that gonna be in some type of public place where, I guess, other neighbors, there'll be notification? I know you mentioned that. How far was that?
The ad hoc committee meetings are posted, so they are, you know, they are open meetings. You know, the, the, the balance of transparency, like these are, you know, the, you know, these are land negotiations, so it's a, you know, some parts of the exact proposals are confidential. But that's far along in the process. The very first thing is, is during the pre-qualification stage, have they, have they, have they considered what this community, you know, wants? Have they talked to the planning department? Do they understand what zoning? Have they gotten some indication that their potential idea is even, something that is even feasible? Those kinds of things will be, you know, hopefully very transparent. We're trying to push people to make sure they understand that.
I think one of our goals too was, you know, with having the mayor appoint a member of the ad hoc, you know, would be important to create a conduit back, back to the city itself. But then also, you know, as far as community transparency, you know, we have a couple individuals on one of the ad hocks that border one of the, the school sites, you know, that are, that live, their property, you know, backs up to the, the open space in the back of the school. And so we certainly, we want, we want to be transparent in this process and like, like Roger mentioned, you know, I don't, none of the meetings are necessarily closed. We want to have good representation. We also need it to be manageable so we can work the process through the committee. But we, you know, that is a goal of ours. So as we're, as we're learning and navigating this, if, if there's opportunities to be more transparent, we certainly, we wouldn't shy away from that because that, that is a goal and certainly it's a desire not only from, from you here, but from our communities as well and something that we really want to make sure we're, we're, we're trying to get right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So how much interest have you had in, in potential buyers? Are those conversations, are you entertaining those conversations at this time?
We're gonna find out the amount of interest in our first two properties in about 10 days. And so it's been, it's, we've, we've tried to pin down JLL on, you know, how many, how many pre-qualification responses do you think we'll get? And they're reluctant to do that right now. So we'll have a better idea in about 10 days, what that interest looks like. And then we'll release, you know, it'll be, it'll be a key learning moment in the process to say, what was the interest? And then what was the quality of the interest? We should start to be able to understand that at that point. And then we'll see, you know, who moves on to, to be recommended to submit proposals at that point.
Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So the process sounds a little bit like what we're doing with Lutheran a little bit. So you guys are kind of shepherded along to property owners and you're kind of shepherding along the public process. So I kind of get that, that makes sense. Is there any, as far as the money that you get from selling the property, is there any restriction on where that money can be used or what that money can use? Can it only go to CIP stuff? Can it go back into the general fund or how's that work?
You know, to be honest, I'm not exactly sure the, the account that it goes into, if it's our general fund or if it's reserved in our capital fund. I'll find that out though, and I can follow up with you on that. I don't want to, I don't want to misrepresent the actual behind that, if it's reserved or not for a certain use.
Have you guys started estimating how much money the district might make after selling all these properties or what you're kind of looking to? Because it sounds like we're about $40 million in the red, right? Every year or?
Well, the, the hard part with, with this is, you know, they're, they're worth, they're worth what the proposals say they're worth. And so I think we're gonna, again, get a good idea when we start to get to the proposal phase around how much money the district will actually see as a result of the sale. We, we don't know what that is. And I mean, we're not, we're not estimating yet, just because it's such a big unknown right now.
Now, I know you said that the two new schools that are closing, those will be added to this list. Are there any other properties or anything like that changing or moving around?
You know, the only, the only other property that's, you know, in a little bit of a state of flux is our, our Coal Creek K8 school. The board also voted to, to close that school, but there's a potential charter option there that they're in the middle of, of negotiating and understanding. So there's, there's a chance that that one ends up on the list and there's a chance that it might be run as a charter for a while. But that's the only one, other one in addition to the two I mentioned.
Okay. And I know, I understand why that would be a charter school because that would, that's way up out of the way, you know? But, and we were kind of assured during the process a year ago that there were no new charter schools being considered in Jeffco. Is that still true that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so they're not looking to sell these schools to charter schools?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, thank you.
No, that hasn't come up.
Well, that's my, that's my list of questions from our counselors so far. So if you, if you want to go onto phase two and you're...
Oh, great. I appreciate the opportunity to do my best at answering these. I have one specific one I'll follow up on. I'll send a follow-up to Patrick if you wouldn't mind. And I apologize for not, not knowing that in the moment, but it should be relatively easy one to figure out. So a couple other items that I just wanted to, to touch on that it might be of interest is, we are working with, with Patrick on a letter of intent to support the Green at 38th project. So that's in motion right now. And so we're just reviewing that and, and working out the details of that project. One thing that we're also doing is we are working to take a deeper dive into a demographic study particular to the Wheat Ridge area. And we'll be working with the city as well on that. And it sounds like the goal would be at some point to schedule a joint meeting with you and, and the school district around some of the findings and what that information is telling us so we can review that together. I know there was particular interest in the improvements or lack of improvements made at Wheat Ridge High School through the CIP. We did a presentation last week to the board where we're recommending another, an additional wave of investments into Wheat Ridge High School above and beyond. You know, they, they did a first phase kind of this summer. There's a, the next, and actually some of the work is still continuing. And then quite a few improvements are scheduled next summer, but we're adding, we're targeting about an additional $6 million of investments in that school as well. Those, those items, those improvements, those upgrades really went through their design advisory group, their DAG group. We worked with them, worked with the principal, worked with their school accountability committee. And so it was a result of, of a nice process and really feel like that'll help. And I'm, again, I don't know all of the backstory, but I, I do know that was one of the first schools that I toured and I agreed that it needed additional investments. And so I'm, I'm excited to see where the next, you know, where the, the improvements this coming summer get us and then the improvements that I'm, I'm mentioning take that school. And I know that some of the work next summer with the new front entrance, the new student commons area should really be pretty awesome over there. So just wanted to give you that update on those, those improvements. And then there, there was, I'm not as in the loop on this topic, but it sounds like there's been some, maybe some swirling around the D'Angelo's Center and maybe the future of that or future use of that. And, and right now, it sounds like, I got an update from our, our chief of staff earlier, it sounds like there's conversations around how they can expand some police academy opportunities at the D'Angelo's Center and also work on supporting some of our pathways that we're trying to create with our high school reimagined work into, you know, getting students into the field. But right now, there are, there are no conversations or no decisions made right now about moving that facility. And that's, that's about as much as I know. But if you have questions, I could, I can, I can go back and try to get any answers, but I at least wanted to let you know that because I know that's of interest to, to this group. So those were my four additional topics.
Okay, all right.
At least throw out there to the group.
Let's, let's open the, let's open the floor up again to some questions. We always have a pretty engaged group here. We'll start again with Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you for those updates. And I don't really have any questions. I just want to say I appreciate the additional investment into Wheat Ridge High School. I have currently a junior and a sophomore. They're my last two of four going through that school within an eight-year gap. And so in the, what is it, 11 years that I've had students at that school, the only improvement that I saw was to the, to the track and field, which honestly only supports a small population at that school. And so I don't know if it's because we start with a W and we're at the end of the list or, or what it is, but I very much appreciate you supporting those changes, especially like anything that may happen in our auditorium or cafeteria. It's been exactly the same for as long as I can remember.
I'm glad you mentioned that. If I could, real quick, I, I do have just the, the highlighted themes of what that additional, those additional investments, cafeteria, auditorium, some additional energy efficiency, there's some single pane windows that are really bad in some of the rooms that are looking to be upgraded, more painting and flooring to make it more cohesive. There, there was some, some scheduled for next summer, but it wasn't all. So we're really trying to get all of the spaces, some bathroom upgrades, additional mechanical and HVAC. So those are the, kind of the, the flavor of what that, those additional upgrades and improvements are, we're talking about.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'll see your 11 years. I graduated in 2001. 2002 was the last time, I believe, that any money was actually put into Wheat Ridge High School. So a year after I graduated, so that's quite a bit, quite a bit of your time ago, unfortunately. So, well, and I, and I, again, I thank you, as Counselor Hoppy said, for that additional investment. Counselor Nosler Beck and I were there last year and walked with Dave, I can't remember his last name at the moment, and Tommy Dowd and, and the principal, and, and we went through the auditorium and, and, I mean, it's, it's pretty gross, right? And, and that gym floor finally has been replaced after, I believe, 54 years. So pretty impressive. And congratulations, by the way, to Tommy Dowd. They named the, the gym after him, so well deserved. He's a fantastic coach. So we definitely appreciate that investment and something that we'd like to see continue And I know you guys are kind of new to the process. In 2018, that bond went through, I believe it was 2018. And was there some money lost or what, what's the story with that? Can you guys give us a little backstory on the bond and?
As far as money, money lost, I just want to make sure I understand the question.
Well, so I know the bond raised a certain amount of money. Is it, was there some money lost or was there some, some issues with the accounting? Or can, can you guys speak? to that at all?
Construction costs, I think, is what?
Was it construction costs that went up?
Okay, yeah.
Or is that?
It's just, yeah, I mean, those estimates for those projects were made several years ago. I think my, what I was told was, as you all know, costs have gone up substantially in the last few years on, on almost everything, and that was my understanding, that the costs just, um, skyrocketed for most of the projects.
Okay, okay, so they didn't lose any money, just, uh, and that's totally understandable, that's how it happened with us, with Wadsworth and everything else, too, so, um, completely understandable. Um, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Dozeman?
Uh, can you give a timeline update as far as, um, any additional conversations around more closures, and, um, if we're going to be looking at high schools that potentially are closing?
No, I, I, I have not heard, and I don't believe there are any more future rounds of ROFs or high school closures planned right now. Um, I just, there haven't been any conversations around that.
I really look forward to, um, a joint meeting with, with, uh, Wheat Ridge City Council and, and the district. I, I really appreciate that we're going to be taking a deeper look into our demographics, and maybe how we can kinda shift and reimagine our education here in Wheat Ridge. Um, Councilmember Stites and I were a part of the program after the two thousand and seventeen closures, um, in regards to Wheat Ridge specifically, and, um, it was like the Wheat Ridge Futures Conference, and we really didn't see anything come out of it, so that was a part of the frustration, um, in regards to school closures specific to Wheat Ridge. Um, and in those demographics, and, and some of those conversations, like, I really think that we need to take a broader look at not only Everett, uh, and Wheat Ridge High School, but, but Manning, and option schools in general, and charter schools in our communities, because I think a lot of the information that I felt was missing was, was, like, not tracking those students that we've lost, um, in Jefferson County, and I really think that we, i- i- it would be wise for us to, to look at why families are choosing charter schools, option schools, um, or homeschool options, or, or leaving the district for whatever reason, and kinda take a deeper look into that, um, and, and how us reimagining our education would, can maybe mirror some of that, and I, for me, I feel like it comes down to, to choice and curriculum, um, and obviously academic standards. And so, making sure that all of our students are at grade level, and, um, performing, and, and not, and taking a holistic approach on that, so just hope that those topics can be a part of those conversations as well.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you. Um, you know, a lot of what we're talking about tonight's in the district, I represent the DeAngela Centers in my district, and the Green, as well as Wilmore Davis, so, um, a lot of big decisions being made, uh, and, or are not made. And, um, so a couple things, first of all, I just, uh, the Green's really exciting and important to our whole community, and I think is a model of how the city and the, the district can partner together on land assets, and, you know, using that model, I'll, I'll mention here, Councilmember Omen, I had a meeting with Patrick and with our Parks and Rec Director to really look at sort of a innovative use for the Wilmore Davis, in which the city would really be looking at just the back part of the, the lot, recognizing that it's, we're in a park desert in that neighborhood, and our community would be devastated to lose access to that green space, 'cause there is no accessible green space that doesn't require crossing a pretty busy street or walking over a mile, so, um, we're, we're looking at, you know, bringing, you know, forward a pretty good, uh, option on that. And so, I'm, I guess I'm kinda skipping back just a little bit, 'cause I didn't realize the other things weren't gonna be related to the first thing, but, um, so is, is that the kinda thing that you would be looking at in that sort of unofficial process of working with city managers on proposals that the communities would be coming forward with?
Yeah, and I think it would be, it would ultimately be proposals that, um, or that the city would be endorsing or a part of. I think that's, those are the conversations we need to have, and really understand, what are the criteria, uh, for that, for that type of proposal, that, uh, that makes it go down that path, that pathway? Uh, and that's why I'm anxious to meet with, uh, with the managers, to, to have a little more, uh, informed conversation around, let's talk through this, and let's, you know, 'cause I, you know, I know that there are, I'm sure all of our city managers have, uh, have heard of potential partnerships, uh, that would be, that might be really good for the cities, and, and maybe, maybe aren't as ideal, based on, on the vision and the priorities of, of the city. And I also wanna make sure, um, that we're clear about, you know, if, if that's the path that a proposal or partnership wants to go down, what, what makes one move forward, and what would make one not move forward, and that has the potential to put the cities and, and city managers in a, in a challenging position, too. So I think those are just the details that we wanna work out and understand.
Okay.
But yeah, I, I mean, it, you know, the, the, the type of proposal that you're talking about, assuming that it fits nicely into that process, could, could, could be a really, a really good one.
Okay. And then my other question has to do with maintaining the properties, because both Wilmore Davis, I mean, first of all, the yard looks beautiful. It is, I think I saw it getting mowed twice in a week recently, but, um, so this process is gonna take a long time. Like, what, what does maintenance of, of both the, the yard parts of the properties, but then also, you know, just maintenance around, like, the fronts of the properties, and like, around the edges that aren't within the schoolyard? What's the, the district's maintenance on that?
You know, I mean, our, our plan is to continue maintaining the properties to make sure that they're, um, you know, they're staying in, in good, good condition and shape, you know, from an external, from an exterior standpoint. Interior, we are looking at, you know, what can we do to, you know, minimize use of utilities, but, but keep the building functional, uh, if needed. And so, there is a commitment from the district to mow, mow the property. I, I was out, uh, we were out visiting a site. We toured all of the sites, uh, that, uh, that are on that closure list, and one of our, one of our crews was out, uh, mowing, and, um, and that's, that's certainly the commitment. We've actually had, uh, you know, a property or two vandalized, uh, you know, which happens at our closed facilities, it can happen at our open facilities, too, but there was a commitment just to remedy that quickly, and so it didn't become an ice, or it didn't become a stain on the community and the aesthetic of the community, so, you know, we're committed to continuing to do, continuing to do that. Um, and you know, I, it, it will be a matter of what, you know, does it, does it need new, new paint on the exterior doors, or can it get by another year? We'll have to look at, you know, each one and make decisions, but the, the commitment's there for sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Councilor Nosler Beck?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so, uh, I had a question, um, and maybe it's just also an idea, um, maybe not a question, but wanted to see if it's at all possible, um, to have, if, if, if the schools are surplus and there's profit made, is there a way that we can make sure that the funds that are from Wheat Ridge schools are then used to go back into Wheat Ridge specifically, so that, um, so that we can hopefully, you know, build up our other schools, um, and make sure that they have the facilities that they need, but also that it goes, goes into, 'cause six million is incredible for Wheat Ridge, but Wheat Ridge High School, but we, we will need more. And I'm just wondering if there's a way to, to make sure that the funds stay in our community from, from those properties?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I don't know if, I haven't been a part of a conversation to say the funds that, you know, that were gained from the sale of a property are going back directly to that community. Um, I can certainly look into that, you know, and I think, um, you know, there's, there's, there's equities and inequities with that approach across the district that we just need, need to consider. You know, right now, there, there are two properties in the Wheat Ridge area, and there are, uh, you know, a handful in our Vata. Um, and so, you know, what, philosophically, what's the right approach to distribute those funds across all the communities? And, and so I, you know, I'll get, I'll get an answer to that, I don't have a great answer right now. Um, my, my guess is, right now, they're, they're gonna be collected more globally and distributed more globally, but I, I can find that out in addition to the question around, uh, if, if those funds have a, have a designation or a reservation, uh, in our general fund or capital reserve.
Thanks. We have, um, uh, an education group here that meets, that's focused on, you know, keeping community engaged, and they would be really interested in just being a sounding for all of y'all.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Stites?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I knew I had one more thing earlier. Um, when is the district looking at redistricting or reboundering the articulation areas, do you know?
I don't know, I haven't heard of a specific date. I know they're looking at that data right now.
Okay.
And it's, it's incredibly complex. And, uh, I don't know if there's a date or a target to say, here's when we're hoping to have, you know, this or that, or these changes implemented. Um, that's certainly something that I can reach out to our staff that are a little more ingrained in that work, and find out if there's a target date to say, you know, we wanna have this in place by the school year, or by this timeframe in, in anticipation of a school year. I haven't heard of a, of a date, that doesn't necessarily mean there isn't one, but I can find that out, too.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering about that. I just, with the, with the closures, it kinda, I feel like it leaves some gaps in some articulation areas, and it might be good to, um, especially for like Everett's, to have a couple maybe extra elementary schools, I'm thinking like Slater, um, Maple Grove, back into this articulation area that feed Everett and, and on up to Wheat Ridge, so-
Okay.
Um, maybe Lundberg, um, which is over here in District One, or just outside in Edgewater, so-
Yep.
Just some thoughts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Additional questions? Did you have some additional material?
That was, that was the material.
Okay, so we're kinda, we're kinda rolling down. Any other, any other comments from council? Well, I wanna, I wanna thank you very much for coming. This is really, uh, really helpful, and, and I think a great way to, to move this process forward is, is to, is to sit at a table and take questions and, and be forthright, and I really appreciate you guys doing that. Um, over the last ten or fifteen years, just to give you a little, a little personal history about Wheat Ridge, it's been very challenging in the school. We went through the, um, the Jefferson Plan, you know, ten or fifteen years ago, we lost it, we lost it junior high, there's been a lot of sort of chaos in our school, uh, and, and, you know, and, and the discussion and the, the announcement this spring was, was some more chaos. Uh, the other, the other side of that coin is, over the last ten or fifteen years, our community's become much more vibrant, and much more aware, and alive, and we are really, uh, communities and cities ebb and flow, and we are definitely flowing, I'll tell you. So we're, we've got a great, a great group of citizens, and, and concerned citizens, and, and the parents of, of school-aged children, but grandparents and people that don't have kids that are interested in the process. So, uh, we also, uh, look at the schools as a, as a valuable resource, and we're, we're excited about having great, great educational opportunities for our kids, so we wanna have a robust, working, uh, successful school system, and that's good for all of us, so we wanna be a partner in this process. Um, you know, so I, I really wanna, wanna once again, thank you for coming, we're, we're anxious to do whatever we can to make this a successful projec, process for everyone. Okay? Thank you. Um, well, that, uh, that's our main item tonight, so thank you very much for coming. We've got a couple of, of information things, or an opportunity for council to make, make a little headway on, um, on the television. And, uh, so I think our next item is to go to, um, staff.
Staff reports.
Staff reports.
Um, yeah, I have one quick update, uh, to stay on the theme of our schools. Um, we received, um, preliminary, um, announcement that we received a grant for the Green, um, from the, from DOLA, Department of Local Affairs. Um, the, the mayor and Brandon Altenberg, who's our grants and special projects coordinator out of the Parks and Rec Department, went up to Avon, was that a week or so ago?
Yeah, and, and with the manager, you know, it was-
And it was a little small role with, for the manager.
And, uh, we had to go up to Avon to present our, our, um, our application, and, uh, got a call the next morning that, um, we received an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for the Green. It's from the, um, uh, Energy, and, I know, I, yeah, I was a little concerned about driving that far for a seven-minute presentation, but, uh, we did get launched on the way back, so I think, um, but-
How did we, how did we do on the timeline?
Uh, and, yeah, we had four minutes, four seconds left in our presentation's timeline, so, so I thanked the mayor and Brandon, uh, who did a great job, and, um, so, it's-
(laughing)
I, I, I know, right? Um, so, um, we're very excited about that. Um, that will, that'll help quite often, and as Jeff mentioned, we do have a, a letter of intent to, um, with, with the school district to, um, have the portion of the park property deeded to the city. Um, there'll be a reverter on it, that if the city ever did something different with it, the school district gets, gets first right, first right of refusal to get that back, so, yeah, we're hoping, um, we're on schedule for construction of the parking lot for the school to start, um, June of next year, when school's out, so, thank you. That's all I got.
Is that it?
Ally, you got any updates for the group?
Nope.
Okay, I guess we're going then to elected officials' reports. Mayor Potem Stites?
Speaking of the Green, uh, I was there, along with a lot of other community members, uh, for the makeup trunk-or-treat on Saturday. It was not as big as every other year, but, uh, it was a lot of fun, it was cool, and there was still some really cool decorated cars and, uh, some Barbie-themed stuff, lots of fun stuff, so, thank you to everybody who helped put that on with the city and everybody who came.
Right. Uh, Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so it's my last Happiness Gardens update of the, of the season. Um, the last couple of weekends have been leaf drop-off. There are, there is like an Olympic-sized swimming pool worth of leaves that have been dropped off at Happiness Gardens, and what is so exciting is that those leaves will be composted and turn into beautiful things next year, as we grow more great things at Happiness Gardens. So, um, I think they're still accepting leaves, uh, on Saturday, I believe, and you have to drop 'em off in the big leaf bags that you can get at, at Ace, um, but it's just such a great, great way of, um, you know, using, using our resources well, and, um, I look forward to seeing the gigantic piles of leaves in the composting at Happiness Gardens. And, um, with that, I am eagerly awaiting, in just under twenty-four hours, to find out, um, hopefully that the citizens of Wheat Ridge have voted yes on TJ. So, that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you very much. Additional items? Councilor Weaver?
Uh, I just wanted to add to the Happiness Gardens update. The happiness continues as, uh, the goats who also make good compost, uh, will be moving from Lewis Meadows in District Three to Happiness Gardens in District Two, probably sometime next week.
Thank you. Um, Val Nosler Beck?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to thank everybody for the conversation tonight, it was really great to, to talk to the school district, and, um, I really appreciated what you said about our community and the schools. Um, uh, Mayor Starker, um, and, and I'm like seeing myself three times in a row on the screens right now, so I'm trying to not look at the screen. It's really, really freaking me out. Um, so, uh, the other thing that I just wanted to, I'm kind of tacking on to what, um, Councilmember Hulteen was saying, but just, uh, it's election night eve, and I just encourage everybody in the community to please remember to vote, um, tomorrow. It's very simple to do, if you've got your ballot that's been mailed to you, there's drop boxes in our community that make it just a quick, two-minute diversion from wherever you're headed, so please remember to vote, um, by seven PM tomorrow. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, do anybody else? Uh, Councilor Dozeman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to, eh, announce the Feed Your Soul Fitness Turkey Trot, which is going to be Saturday, November eighteenth, beginning at nine AM, um, starting at Prospect Park, which is at Forty-Fourth Avenue and Robb Street. Uh, registration ends, uh, November sixteenth at five PM, so sign up. Uh, my kids and I will be there. Uh, Lutheran is actually sponsoring the event, and we'll have a booth, so, uh, my kids get to run while, while I get to work the crowd, so, please join us, thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. Another, Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say a quick thank you to staff for all the work that they've done this past couple of weeks. We haven't seen each other for a while. And also a big thank you to my neighbors. I had some amazing Halloween decorations in my neighborhood that were just over the top. It was just like, wow, I need to up my game next year. Thank you.
Councilor, Councilor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say thank you very much to the snowplow drivers that were out there with the, the snow that fall that we had. And so they're the champs here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
One last thing.
One more, one more time. Another, another bite at the apple.
Actually, I wanted to just thank Councilmember Hutchinson and Councilmember Nosler Beck, Nosler Beck as their outgoing council members. You guys have served our community very well for the last four years. And I really appreciated working with the two of you and the dialogue and the questions that you've provided here at the dais and during study sessions. So just want to thank you for your service. And I know I'll see both of you in the community doing hard work. So appreciate you, ladies.
Councilor Hoppe.
Yeah, and I just want to remind you, you still have one more meeting though, next week. You still have one more meeting still to come.
That's right. Additional elected officials matters?
Yes, sir.
Ah, okay. Mister? Mister Clark?
I have several things to talk about. I'm sure you're all curious about what's going to happen at 7:00 tomorrow evening when the votes begin to get counted. And if anyone asks you, I'm sure you all remember this, as a refresher, you can vote literally if you are in line and you are not registered yet. Up until 7:00 PM tomorrow, we, obviously you're not going to be mailing about that now, you're going to have to put it in a drop box or take it to the county. What the county does, based on the tour that we went on just 10 days ago, they've already opened all of the envelopes that they receive from voters who have dropped them in the mail or in one of the collection boxes. Those votes have been counted, but nobody, not even the elections folks, have any idea what the count is. Because the counting is done by several different machines, none of which are ever connected to the internet. They are completely air-gapped. However, at 7:00 and 1:07 tomorrow evening, they will start to post the results, not only of our two council races, but also the thing we're all dying to know about, TJ, as well as HH. We should literally know within 10 minutes after 7:00 tomorrow evening what the trends look like. Several rumors have reached my ears that I have decided to run for city council or for mayor in 2025. Let me be as explicitly clear as I can possibly be. I have absolutely no plan to ever run for mayor of Wheat Ridge. It's a wonderful job. It's just not for me. In 1868, the Republican Party went to General William Tecumseh Sherman, he of the March from Atlanta to the Sea, and said, "General, we want you to be our presidential candidate in the 1868 election." General Sherman's response was, "If nominated, I will not run. If elected, I will not serve." Politicians call that now a Sherman-esque denada. I'm not blowing smoke. I have absolutely no interest in that decision. At first, I thought, why even bother to mention this? Nobody's at my door asking me to run for mayor. But there are a lot of people out there who are going to run for mayor. And whatever equation you're calculating, I'm not in it. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Steve, can you pull your mic up? There's somebody from, somebody from the public said they can't hear you.
Sorry.
There you go.
I attended a Wheat Ridge High School girls softball game, one of the last ones of the season. Now, obviously, the softball season is now over. However, can anybody name beyond football, baseball, basketball, what are the varsity sports we could go and enjoy at Wheat Ridge High School? Particularly the young women who are looking forward to enjoying Title IX, which is 50 years old this year, in college if they go, are always encouraged by the public's presence and our support for them. And I challenge everybody in the room, whether you are an elected official or a police officer, find some time to go to at least one Wheat Ridge High School athletic event this winter. Indeed, I would be willing to help put together a group of us to go together to support the Wheat Ridge High School athletics. I don't expect we'll see, you know, world-class athletes, but we'll see world-class young people who have a bright future. And if you don't think athletics makes any difference to people's lives, you're missing the boat. There is an opening for a member of the Cultural Commission in District Three. One of the members from that district resigned just in the last few days. So if you know of anybody, please let Mayor Potem Stites and Councilmember Weaver know. Last thing I wanted to say tonight, Val, I don't know whether you're going to be with us next week or not. We are all praying for you, pulling for you, hoping only the best for you. And I have to say, I have been in the process that your family is in now two times. It is uphill on burning rocks the whole way. But you have fought this thing with so much courage and grace, I cannot tell you how much it means to watch how you do this. Thank you. Get better. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. What, what, Chris? Nothing tonight? Okay, okay. Thank you. Any, any more elected officials matters to come before us? Councilor Hutchinson.
I just wanted to add to Mr. Kirkpatrick's speech there. How about volleyball? How about basketball? How about tennis? How about track?
Debate.
Pardon?
It's not a sport.
Yes, it can be.
Is there a gymnastics team? Or is there a, there is no gymnastics?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. We will be back at a regular meeting next week. Tomorrow is Election Day. I hope everyone will, will be able to vote and cast their franchise. Very important. We will have new, new counselors joining us on our council, one way or the other. Next week, we will swear them in, one week from tonight. So we also have, you've seen the memos, we have some photographic things going on earlier before the meeting. We have a, a tour around of some, some sites. I don't know if the counselor's coming with us on, on our affordable? No, okay. But if so, next week, next Saturday is also the second Saturday of the month. And I invite everyone that can join me at the Vanola's Italian Deli at 38th and, I'm going to not get it right, Yukon, maybe? Or, that's pretty good. At 9:00, we'd love to have you there. So any more business to come before us tonight? We will stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here.